S seven zero, next item.
Under Finance Budget Report, Administration will update the Board on the budget. This item provides an opportunity for the Board's information and discussion.
Welcome back, Susan.
Good evening, President Rhodey, Superintendent Thompson, members of the Board, Dr. Irving. It's spring in Kansas, so of course, we still have some legislative activity that occurred during the past month. Although now that we are finished with the signee die session, we will be waiting for some Supreme Court action next. But let's talk a little bit about what happened here in the last month. So the last time I presented, the legislature had met and had worked through a school finance formula which they completed in the wee hours of the morning, which did contain, as I believe I reported it at the time, an eighty million dollar technical error, in addition to a few other small technical errors, and had done some very interesting things with counting the LOB as general state aid and inflating the base and a few other very confusing items within the formula that I don't think I could even begin to explain. So I'm very glad that when they returned for the final work of the session, they took a lot of that confusing LOB language out and they fixed their technical error. So we did end up with a formula that passed last Monday, which for the most part structurally looks very similar to last year's formula, with just a few exceptions and some additional funds. So let's talk through some of those details. The school finance plan that passed, the legislature is known as House Sub for Senate Bill sixty-one. That's its final version name. It increased the base state aid in year one from four thousand six dollars to four thousand one hundred sixty-five dollars for a four percent increase to base state aid. The formula also added some additional aid to cover special ed expenditures. By statute, the state is supposed to cover ninety-two percent of excess costs for special ed aid. We had been around seventy-eight percent. This additional aid will put us in the eighty to eighty-three percent range. So an improvement over where we were, but still not statutorily compliant. There is some increased funding for early childhood within the formula. The formula also fixes the major equity problems noted by the Supreme Court last year. The mental health pilot stayed within this last version of the formula, which is a one-year pilot program which includes Wichita. And within that pilot program, we'll receive around a million seven for liaisons to work with local mental health companies to serve the needs of about twenty to twenty-three schools. We will also serve as a pass-through, so the state will send us money and we will send that money to the mental health associations. And then we are also doing a very creative pass-through to the Kansas Department of Health. So we haven't got all the details on that, but there will be three revenue streams within this pilot, one of which is for our employees and two are pass-throughs. Pass-throughs, so it will count and it will look like aid to us, but only part of it will actually go to funding for our own employees, but that will benefit students of our district. There is funding within the formula to provide ACT and work keys testing for our students. That money will go directly to those companies. We won't have to be involved in that. And the formula also provides some increased state aid for the local option budget. This does not create any new funding stream for us, but it would be a reduction potentially to our taxpayers. In the outlying years, years two, three, four, and five, there is a three percent increase to the base aid and thereafter would be a consumer price index or an inflation component in the outlying years. So those are kind of the key highlights of the formula. Just to kind of give you what this looks like from the entire state's perspective, these are estimates from K S D E. It's a hundred and ninety-one point nine million dollars year one. That includes the a hundred million dollars that was in Senate Bill nineteen from last year. So that's kind of total funding for year one. And then a hundred, a hundred and nine million year two, about a hundred and thirteen year three, about a hundred and fourteen year four, and a hundred and sixteen million year five. And you can see that there's a really large special education state aid in the first year with a little bit in the outlying years. And that large supplemental general state aid amount, which again doesn't generate any spendable dollars for us. It just will be a reduction to the mill levy. The mental health pilot, which is a very targeted program. It's a ten million dollar pilot, but only seven point five million dollars will go to services because they'll retain two and a half million for a computer program to support the data collection efforts. So that's what kind of the money looks like statewide. Kind of what's next in the initial briefs were filed today, actually. Both the plaintiff and the state filed their briefs. The response briefs are due a week later, and then the oral arguments begin May twenty-second. The Supreme Court has promised us a decision by June thirtieth. There are a couple of schools of thought that they might come back fairly quickly so that the legislature might be able to come back earlier. But that will, we'll just have to wait and see how the timeline actually works. So let's look at the possible decision points that might be made and how that will impact us. So the first possibility is that the Supreme Court does find that the school finance formula meets its constitutional requirements of adequacy and equity. And it puts House bill, House sub bill for Senate Bill sixty-one into law as of July first, and we are rocking and rolling on the budget as quickly as we possibly can. So that is an option. That is a possibility. A second possibility is that the Supreme Court looks at the facts of the case and rejects some parts of the school finance formula. It doesn't have to reject the whole thing, but it might reject certain parts. Or it could reject the formula in its entirety. If the court does reject parts of the finance formula, then that opens a whole nother set of possibilities. The first one is that they have ruled in time to bring the legislature back for a special session before the June thirty cutoff date for our budget year. And that the legislature could possibly have an answer before June thirty, and we get all this resolved so that again, July first, we have an acceptable formula and we are good to start the next fiscal year. So that's a possibility. A second possibility is that the Supreme Court, as it did last year, even though it hadn't made a decision on whether the formula was adequate or equitable, allowed the statute to go into effect, go into law, and we were allowed to operate under that formula until they made their determination. So that's a possibility. If they do that, it might be with the understanding that year one is okay and it's the outlying years that are a problem. Or it could just extend until they make a decision that, again, the entire formula is not adequate and it challenges the legislature to come back sometime in July to make fixes. The kind of worst-case scenario for us is that the Supreme Court orders a partial or full shutdown in July until the formula meets constitutional muster. And so we've been talking about this possibility of a shutdown. We've mentioned it a few times in the last few board presentations. We've had this threat over our heads for a few years. I'm sure some feel we're crying wolf yet again. But we, as we said last year, it's better that we hope for the best and prepare for the worst on what can happen. And the reason why we showed this last week, or last month, the reason why we're concerned with the possibility of a shutdown is the fact that the courts, the court will look at several of these cost studies, including the most recent by Dr. Taylor. And again, if you look at the cost day from Dr. Taylor, if you look at the previous cost studies adjusted for inflation, compare to where the funding is with this new formula, and the hundred million from, even if you include the hundred million from Senate Bill nineteen, you are still significantly under where all the cost studies are kind of bunched up on this chart. You can see we're ranging in the one point six to two point one billion dollar range, and the new money over the, over five years is six hundred and change. If you adjust that for inflation, we get into a worse scenario. So this is, this is the meat of the concern with a possible shutdown, particularly given the light of the language the Supreme Court used in its decision last year. So we have kind of dusted off some of those plans and we've been talking about kind of the next steps in that process. We did communicate with our teachers to allow them to, we reopened the lump sum election so that everyone, you know, can prepare if they are financially concerned to make that lump sum election so that they are paid before this ever comes to potential fruition. Okay, so we talked a little bit about, you know, overall funding for schools. Here's where we see some funding challenges related to this finance bill as it directly relates to USD two five nine. So the chart you see kind of shows the revenues under the new formula in the first year and then the outlying years compared to kind of our general fixed cost per year. And for the most part, we're kind of making the assumption that we have a flat enrollment, so we're not really driving new funding that way. This is just kind of status quo, how much funding would we receive? And for the most part, our fixed cost, if nothing really wonky happens, so we're not having some major outlying fixed costs that we didn't anticipate, like a major transportation change or something like that. It's kind of just normal fixed costs. And if you look, you can see that our revenues in blue are far exceeding our fixed costs. So for the most part, we're looking pretty solid on this chart. Our challenge comes in the minute we add in any sort of modest, and what I mean by modest is kind of an inflationary wage package. The first year, we're not looking too bad. But in the outlying years, you can see that our fixed costs with a modest wage increase and we're back where our expenditures are exceeding our revenues and we have to make some decisions. So this is the challenge of spreading out money over a five-year period, and we believe the court is going to look at this, look at this kind of spread. Okay, so how does this impact our fiscal year nineteen budget planning work? It's, there's still uncertainty. We've said this word now for the past three years. We still are living in a world of uncertainty. As far as when will we know an answer? Will what we are expecting to get change? Will it be more? Will it be less? How much, how much will we get? What other factors are going to be at play? Will we have enrollment changes? Will that change how much money we're going to receive? Will there be shutdown expenses? What does that look like? So there's just a lot of uncertainty and we won't know all of these moving parts for several weeks. And then certainly, how do we, how do we really start managing this budget process around our strategic plan while all of this uncertainty is going on? So these are the, these are kind of the factors at play. This is my, this is my one picture for you, Mr. Rhodey.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
So the, as we're looking, as we're looking at our budget priorities tonight, certainly there is a tremendous amount of pent-up need. I mean, we've had lots of conversations certainly about deferred maintenance. We all are understanding the fact that last year we were able to offer a solid wage package, but we are still several years in arrears on where our employees potentially should have been. And the normal players are still out there as far as transportation, fuel, utilities, all of those things. So we need to be realistic about what we can do with new funding. Certainly, we, the work I would like to do tonight is to make sure that the priorities that we have kind of identified represent what the Board is feeling, but understanding that if you add another twenty items to the list, that's just twenty more areas that I have to divide what's left. So we definitely want to keep that in mind. Certainly, we can add more items, and I certainly want that feedback. It's just then that's that many more items that will need some attention in the budget process. Okay, so we had identified some things that we knew were going to happen in fiscal year nineteen. We believe they all align with our new strategic plan themes, where we are challenging all learners to succeed. Our new school calendar change will fall under that initiative. And some pre-K expansion would fall under there as well. The focus on college and career readiness with our continued expansion of learning centers, supporting the whole, the whole child with our behavior continuum services, specifically the Bryant Opportunity Academy, investing in new staff, recruitment and retention through compensation obviously would be our focus there. And then aligning resources to support student success. That's our transportation contract increase, anything we would want to do with textbooks and curriculum and our ongoing technology needs. Looking back at our fiscal year eighteen budget priorities, a lot of those items that we just covered were on our priority list. So again, we're somewhat aligning already with the work that we're looking at for fiscal year nineteen. Pre-K expansion was on the list. At-risk programs to increase graduation rates was on the list. The social-emotional work was there, recruitment through retention and compensation. Student technology textbooks, those are highlighted in green. Those are kind of duplicates of what we already talked about. What's left in black are items that had been identified last year but have no specific plan at this point other than it was identified as a need. So from my seat, what I would like from the Board of Education is, is this still a good list? Because what I'm, what I'm sitting on as far as our budget planning or that pent-up need I talked about, all departments have started to make requests for increases to budget, and rightly so. There's been a number of years since we've been able to do so. We'll just have to go through them one by one and see how they match up to what the Board is identifying as a priority. If they don't match, that doesn't mean we won't give it some attention. It just won't be at the top of the list. So that, this work as far as establishing the Board's priorities will help us prioritize all those department needs that again, have gone unmet for several years. And now as funding is coming back, we definitely want to address as much as we can with as much impact as we can. So if we want to stop a minute and have any discussion related to these priorities.
Go ahead.
And I think what we're asking you to do is to take a look at, especially look at the themes that we have identified as the themes that we will be working on. And then you can, we've already kind of outlined that for you here on two pages for the two specific years of talking about eighteen, nineteen, and for eighteen and nineteen. And then take a look at the things that we've already invested dollars in, which is where you will see the green. And then as you also, we did send to you also the PowerPoint also, just kind of also giving you the exact same thing that we're giving you here. So I hope you've had an opportunity to look at that and then to be able to talk to us tonight about what are some areas that you still feel like, or you don't see on here, that you'd like for us to consider as we begin to look at the budget and what, all of the priorities and all of the requests that we sit and grapple with probably once a week. And to then to determine where we're going to get the best lift for our students and student achievement. And that's what we're looking for tonight, is some guidance from you. Take away from the list, add to the list, and just the general conversation here at the table. We'd like to have that tonight if we can.
Okay. My personal opinion would be, and I'm just throwing this out because I think it's something that we need to really consider, is to have a workshop on this and spend some time kicking this around with the Board members and allow us to kind of digest this. Is that, would that be a possibility? Do we have time for that?
Absolutely. That's what I was going to say.
And I think, don't we have a special meeting set up for budget here coming up pretty quick, Mike? Or am I mistaken?
You have a special meeting at noon on May the twenty-first for consent items right now. And then this summer, your budget meetings begin on July twenty-third.
And that would be too late. Is that something that we could piggyback a workshop on in May?
Mike, I would suggest we wait till that Supreme Court date if we can.
Well, I think what Ms. Willis is asking us for is how to go about with the money. If it stays just like this, I think, am I correct? She needs to have, start getting something put into her. So even if we're wrong, it'll give us a start.
What we're looking for from you is big-picture thinking. Then we will take what you say. So if you like kind of the direction, we're not looking for you to tell us how many or to be real specific. What we're looking for is the big, general ideas of what you think. And then from there, we will take what you say, and then we will build some options for you to be able to consider. And we can bring those back to the board meeting. But what we need from you tonight is just big thinking, themes that you see that you like on here. You can affirm some of these. You can say, you know, we'd like to, for you to also add to the list this or, you know, that kind of thing. So we're just looking for dialogue and big-picture thinking. And once you give that to us, then we will go back and work on the specificities of that to bring you back to this Board at this setting the options that you may consider for your pleasure. Does that make sense? Okay, so if we can just kind of maybe think about, if you look at the list, if there are things that affirm with you that you'd like to just lift out and say, I like this, you know, just that dialogue here at the table is what we're looking for if we're able to do that this evening.
We will make it happen. What we can do is there were, and I don't know if Ernestine, but if it's questions about what Dr. Thompson just brought up, just raise your hand and we'll go through it and we'll keep the order that we had for questions for Susan later. So that way, we're not going through it twice.
I do have a question about what Dr. Thompson.
Go ahead.
Okay. I was hoping that since we've got this fairly new tonight, I hadn't seen it in this format before. And I do remember that we spent a time and we mentioned that recruitment and retention through compensation in staff. But what I haven't got is a good picture of, once we, that was the number one priority, I believe, at the Board during the workshops on coming up with the strategic plan. But I have not received, or I don't think anyone has received any information on, once we pay for that, kind of like when you go to the store and you say, a ladder is the very first thing I'm going to buy, but I also need to buy some roofing and some other stuff, and here's how much I got left after I buy the ladder. That's what we're going to need, and that's why I'm thinking maybe we need that in a workshop as opposed to just throwing out ideas tonight. Because I don't know if this list is going to change much, but what we haven't assigned is, are we, are we like ninety-nine percent interested in pre-K expansion and then the rest is one percent? Or is it fifty percent recruitment and retention? And then the rest of it is the other fifty percent? We haven't seen any options of what any of those mean.
And we're going to give you options once you tell us what you want options around, is where we're going. So for instance, if you want pre-K expansion, you tell us that. We then go back, look at data, look at the need, all of those, look at the space, the facilities. Do we have space for more pre-K programs? Then we bring back to you and say, we're able to do this. And so that's where you will get your specificity of things.
And that's, and that's one way you can, and that's why I'm, that's one way you can do it. Or the other way you can do it is if you, as a group, say, this is what we want to pay for first, and then what does that leave us? And this is what we want to pay for second, and this is what leaves us. Is that a possibility?
The issue is, is that if you're looking at your recruitment and retention through compensation, we can't tell you how much that's going to be because you have to do that in negotiations.
Right.
And so to say that you're going to spend this amount on it is not realistic until you're able to negotiate and see where you end up.
And maybe, and maybe the Board has, I know when we went through the strategic plan workshop, I know that was the number one thing that we all had, that had the most votes on. But maybe it's changed since then, and that's what I'm saying. I don't think the list is going to change much, but we're going to have to have some kind of starting base. And I realize recruitment and retention is probably the toughest one that if we decide that it's still our number one, still our number one priority, that's going to be the toughest one to, since we're about to start negotiations. But we, we're going to have to decide whether everything else is come second or is it a tie for first? See what I'm saying? Instead of, instead of just saying it's all the list and we want to pay for this, we need to also kind of assign an importance level to it.
No, I understand.
Is the important levels a five, a four, a three, a two, a one?
Stan, I think I understand what you're saying. I think what Susan's asking for is, is there anything on this list that we don't want to do? Is there anything on this list that's not there that we want to do? We don't care about priorities yet. We just want to make sure that we have, if there's something that is near and dear to your heart, we probably ought to, if we agree as a Board that it should be on the list, we should add it. If there's something that we all agree should be struck from this list, we want to do that tonight. And then Susan will, I think, I'm going to put words in your mouth.
Go for it.
Play with the list and say, these are our options, and they'll bring us back as close to real-world numbers. And this is kind of the way we've done it before, but we haven't had a strategic plan to help guide us. And we haven't had the foresight to do these types of things. Before it was just, you know, we've got to cut a hundred million out of the budget and we don't have any choices. We've got to, we've got to do some ugly things. So, you know, I think what we're asking for is just, if we agree to this list, and this doesn't have to be the final list, but it gives Susan a chance to get off the ground. Because if we wait until the last minute, she doesn't like us very much because she's got to pull her hair out and get all of her staff. I'm teasing. I know that better than that. But it gives her staff a chance to help us make informed decisions a little bit easier than, than worrying about to us tonight what's number one and number four. Does that make sense?
Mike, can I jump in here?
Sure.
To speak to Stan. This is why you concrete sequential folks are really uncomfortable with ambiguity, I know. And we've got at least two enormous ambiguity-producing things, the Supreme Court and negotiations.
Yes.
So I think that that's the reason why that we're at this point are just saying, you know, it's almost if we could have. But, and I have a question, is if it's on this list but not green, it's still on our list, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
It's just, for example, I mean, especially with the number of new Board members that weren't involved in this conversation this time last year. If career, for just one example, if career and academic counselors under individual plans of study was not a priority, that could be an item we kind of park over to the side and we focus on the others. And if there was enough funds in the scenario, A, B, C, however many we're able to bring back, we had some funds that we could focus on that, great, but that would not be the priority because that was not identified as a priority by the Board.
Let's try this. Let's start with Julie and say, hey, I like the list the way it is, or I want to add this, or I want to subtract this, and go through. Is that okay with everybody? I'm not trying to put any words in mouths, but, and then we can, that way we can send her off with what she needs tonight. And then I know she'll bring us back something because like she's saying, you know, she's talking about pay raises, which talking about pay raises, which we don't know what they'll be because it's negotiated. But the other thing that, because we're extending the, the school year, transportation costs are going to go way up. So that's something that we've got to factor in before we even start. So there's, there's a lot of little things that we got to, you know, worry about before we start worrying about the, the other things. Am I, okay. Julie.
Okay, well, I agree with Stan that our top priority was recruitment and retention through compensation. And then I think everything on the F-19 list is good. And on the F-18 list, um, the highest priorities are the one in green. If you can also do the ones in black, then great, but I think the highest, I think the ones in green are, um, so F-19, all, F-18, green.
Ben.
Um, so I, I'm, because I deal with a lot of ambiguities and figuring out the real and I was looking at what we're already signed up to do. And, uh, I think that's the school calendar change, the transportation contract increase, those are going to happen because we, you know, so those are thumbs up. Uh, one that I would consider removing from the list is textbooks and curriculum. And it's because I believe most of the time we pay for those with the fees fund. Is that correct?
We do, however, um, our student population ha, um, we, we pretty much pay for the majority of the books for students because of our free and reduced populations that we serve. And then the ones who do not, sometimes we do struggle with the collection of those. So we generally, uh, we have, we do have some, but then you also supplement, uh, with general funds to pay for the remaining cost of textbooks.
Okay. And I'm always a big fan of pre-K. So, thumbs up for pre-K. And that's all the input I have.
All righty, thank you, Ben. Stan?
Yeah, I, I think I still, I, I'm glad Ben, Ben brought up the two things that we already know we're going to have to pay for, the increased transportation costs. And, and what was the second one?
Just the calendar.
Yeah, the calendar change, thank you. And then I would like to see a couple scenarios, maybe in a workshop, or, excuse me, that will have to be in, that will have to be an executive session, but a couple scenarios of what it would take, because I'm not sure if we know exactly yet what it would take for, to increase our recruitment and, and retention. But that's still my number one priority. Uh, still very interested in at-risk programs to increase graduation rates and also enrich parents as teachers, as a third one.
Thank you.
Cheryl.
I think I'm saying the exact same thing the rest of you've said, but I've been comparing the 18 and 19 lists. And I think if you look at that 18 list and you add under challenge all learners to succeed, there's pre-K expansion if we add the school calendar there, which y'all talked about. And then you drop down to support the whole child. And the only one that's under that on the 18 list is the continue the work with social and emotional. But you can also add then the behavioral continuum into that area. And then at the very last one, align resources if we add the transportation contract increases. I think we have taken 18 and 19 and mushed them together. And to me, that's acceptable because I don't think our priorities have changed from what, what's been set earlier in my mind, so that's my two cents.
Ron.
Where does special needs or ESL fall under this, or is that something separate?
The special needs, um, for the most part, we're, we have to provide those services. So that becomes just how much general fund transfer do we need to support that need? At least at this point, um, there, they have had, they have some position requests out there and that will be looked at as part of kind of that recruitment through compensation and, um, retention as far as if we're adding up, you know, a handful of new positions, that would be in that area. So that, when we come back with some specifics, um, we would identify for the board, you know, we're going to add these positions in these areas to support district initiatives related to staff compensation pieces. So special ed, ELL, pre-K, all of those that are involving staff costs, some are very specific initiatives include, which would include the pre-K expansion. Some are just to address the changing needs of the district and that, we'll come back with that.
Okay.
So for those two areas, they would be in that recruitment and staff compensation piece.
Thank you. Ernestine.
I see here about career and academic counselors, may I assume that regular counselors for, there's been so much talk about the need to have more and more counselors at all levels, that that, that would come under our support the whole child, wouldn't it? So, I mean, we've even had a governor that's advocated about adding counselors. And we have people at the national level saying, you know, we've got to deal with this mental health and counseling. I just want to make sure that it's on here, but it would be in this category called support the whole child, correct?
Yes.
We can add it?
Yes.
Then I like the list as is.
The nice thing about going last is you get to add whatever you want. You know, the one thing that I see on this list that nobody's touched and, you know, is going to start, just start blowing up on us big time in the next two to three years. And facilities has done a good job trying to hold the cover on it, is deferred maintenance. I mean, that's the last thing on our list, and it's always the last thing on our list. But eventually, we're not going to have a roof over our head if we don't take care of deferred maintenance. But that's probably one of the biggest dollar items that we have that's going to take away from all the other things that we just said. So that's kind of the spoiler in the group. But, you know, if, if we're doing outside school, we can do that a couple of months a year in Kansas and learn something. It's kind of hard to do it in the snow. But, uh, you know, the rest of these things that are on this list, you know, those are things that I think we all agree on and, and should go forth with. That's something that we can talk about. You know, uh, that's, we can always have a workshop. But we want to have it timely so that it wasn't disrupting. And next week is graduation and that's always a fun time, so in many ways, but.
And Ernestine's right about waiting till after May 22nd.
We, we actually will take what you have given us and we'll go back and close the door and, uh, take a look at the priorities and then begin to put some recommendations together, uh, for you. Of course, we won't have any final anything until after we get the word that we are a go. But it is helpful to have you give us this information because we, it is important that we stay ahead. We can't wait for something and then try to run to catch up. So we have to like play with things in our minds about what it would look like if, and if, and if, and whatever the outcomes are, at least we are ready to rock and roll and provide you with some solid information to be able to make solid decisions about what happens with the budget.
All right.
Well, I, I appreciate the feedback. I think this is a great start for us to go back and look at all of the requested items to date and, and, and take this priority list and match those up so that we have a very good couple of options, if not three or four, to bring forward, um, for some further discussion by the board. So thank you for that, for that effort tonight.
Thank you.
So our budget planning next steps, now that you've confirmed your budget priorities, um, the budget department will continue its work on the fiscal year 19 budget. Um, school districts across Kansas will be watching the action on May 22nd very closely as the Supreme Court hears oral arguments. And that, again, that shutdown, um, potential this summer, we are in those planning discussions, hoping for the best, planning for the worst, and we'll bring, bring some of that work back depending on how things are looking after this May 22nd date. Um, and to, to recap for the evening, the legislature passed a new school finance formula putting another $530 million into education over five years in addition to the 100 million already budgeted for 2018-19. But the question of adequacy and equities is now in the hands of the Supreme Court. The continued uncertainty relating to our budget, especially as we move into the summer, remains, um, out there as it has for the past few years. And the crafting of the fiscal year 19 budget will continue as the board has confirmed its, um, big picture priorities, which do align to its new strategic plan and themes. And that's all I have tonight.
Well, we have a whole bunch of questions. Starting with me. On page, I think it's two, the, the total estimated funding for Kansas schools, I want to make sure everybody realizes that the 191 million isn't ours.
That is, that's across the state. We, as a, as a percentage of state funding, you can, the general thumb is we're about 10%, sometimes upwards of 11, but 10 is the easy math. So you can kind of look at it, if, if we're 10% of that budget, then we're get 10% of this money.
Right. On the LOB, I've heard them, heard this discussed many times at the state level. And they keep talking about not wanting to raise taxes, but they're giving us the ability to raise our own LOB to raise more funds, which goes to topeka and they claim is their funds and then send it back to us that way. You know, it sounds like to me that, that the, uh, the state is just trying to get us to raise taxes so they don't have to. We're the bad guys. Is that?
You know, certainly the, the change several years back of where the state was actually taking the 20 mils for the general fund and, and, and giving that back to us as state aid was kind of that start of that path of the reclassification of money, um, as far as what was considered as state aid. Some of that discussion related to the local option budget has been, um, the inclination by certain factions of the, the House and the Senate to push funding to the local level. And certainly the, the work on the local option budget and that whole discussion of where we should have ended up, whether it's 30%, 31, 32, 33% of the LOB, is the work to push that locally, you can see that in action by some of the, the changes there.
Another question is, you're talking about, uh, provides, um, the new formula provides a 3% increase to base for the following four years on the consumer price index.
The, the first year's 4%, the next four are 3%. The years after the five, there's an ongoing, that, that, there's not a need for a new formula because after year five, they're saying that, that aid will go up by the consumer price index. So this is a, it's a five-year infusion of money beyond the inflation rate. And then in year six and thereafter, they're building at a consumer price index amount. So five years of kind of a big push of money and then inflation thereafter.
Now, the, according to your numbers that are a couple of pages back, you kind of addressed that a little bit. Is that going to cover our cost of living, you know, insurance, lights and gas? And, you know, I just read today that oil hit another, hit 70 again for the first time in years. Prices are going up. Is this going to cover, is 4%, 3% going to cover us?
If our enrollment remains flat or goes down, we will have to make adjustments to the budget. If we are in a growth mode, there is a possibility that base aid on, you know, on top of the two, the two or three or whatever percent the consumer price index is, we might be okay. But a lot of factors would have to align. So I'd say the, the better chance of us having to make budget adjustments downward at the consumer price index level is, that's a pretty significant chance that that's the, the world we'll be living in at that point.
So budget cuts with an increase?
Budget cuts, probably. Yeah, there's just no way to slice that positively.
Susan, I appreciate it. Thank you. Uh, we have a question from Stan.
Thank you. I should probably already have this number in my head, but, um, if we had kept up with inflation, I think the last time we were in, constitutionally had funded our school was 2008, maybe it was 2007, I forget what year it was. But if we had, the last year that we were constitutionally okay, uh, and if we had adjusted that for inflation each year, what would have been the base this year?
Have to, I don't know if I have that right off the top of my head, but it, we were at 4492 in 2008.
Right.
So we'd be well into the five.
Right. And so we're, and so we're looking at 4165.
Right. We were at 30, we've been, we had been frozen at 3852 for basically a three-year period, 4006, and now 4165.
I just wanted to make that clear. And then secondly, on this mental health pilot program, I haven't seen anything yet on exactly what the goal and what the objective of that program is meant to do.
We, um, are still working through that with partners because we are not the only recipients of that information. So we, once we have all of the details, it will be a board agenda item for, uh, presentation. Um, that's why we have not, uh, been in front of you with that because we still are working on the details and what all that will mean.
Was the overall plan for this though, was it in, in a reaction to gun violence?
No.
Not specifically.
No, not specifically. We had some guests come to our district the spring of last year to visit. And we talked about some of the needs that we had with our social, emotional and character development for our students. And from those conversations, um, they, we then were called to a table to do some brainstorming and problem solving. Um, hence then, um, some legislators put their heads together and thought, maybe we should look at some of the high, um, low poverty schools who have similar issues as we do and put a pilot together to be able to see what it would look like with partners from the outside, working and even living inside of our schools, working not only just with families on the outside, but bringing all that in and wrapping services around kids inside of the schools. And so, uh, we have, we're still working through details. We're on conference call on a reg, regular basis. Uh, and once again, we have all of the details to that. We will definitely come before you with a presentation for specifics.
Are they connecting mental health to lower income schools?
They are connecting our data to, and the datas of others' districts that are like ours. And they are then selecting those school districts because we do have a high, um, high population of students who need those services. Well, not necessarily just free and reduced, but we're looking at, um, mental health services. And when you look at the populations who serve a lot of the mental health, you, you look at, just for example, uh, we serve foster care students in this particular area in Cedric County. So of course, we would need to provide supports to those students. So this is another way for us to be able to have some support to be able to serve the needs of the students that are in foster care that sit in actually two or three counties. And Cedric County is one of them. And we, the Wichita Public Schools, serve them. So that, again, just looking at our demographics, looking at the population of students that we serve and the needs that they, that they come with, hence why we were selected, not necessarily because we are free and reduced, but because of the population of students that we serve.
And that's what I was trying to get to. So this is, is this a foster care program or a mental health?
It is not. It's a mental health. And it has nothing to do with gun violence. It has nothing to do with free and reduced. It has something to do with that we want to meet the needs of our students who have social and emotional needs. And our data says that we are in need of support for that kind of resource. So this, the, we were asked to sit at the table to brainstorm ideas. And we have some thoughts and some things that we are going to be bringing to you as we work with other school districts and the legislators who brought this to us. And then we will then bring you a full report of what that means. But there was nothing that happened, there's nothing that we did, or there was no repercussions or incidents that caused someone to want to do this. We just know as a need across, not just this, our district, but across the country, what you'll begin to see is that more kids are coming with backgrounds and trauma. They're coming to our districts with trauma. And we need as a district to be able to use the resources in our community and inside of the schools to be able to meet the needs of our children and the families in which they go home to live every day. So we can't do one without the other. So, we can't do one without the other. So, we thought it would be a good idea to pilot to be able to bring the family supports that happen on the outside and the stuff that we do in the inside, how about bringing them together and utilizing all those resources together to meet the mental needs and the social needs of our families and our students.
Doesn't each bill have a preamble on what the purpose of this bill is?
Well, this is actually embedded in the school finance formula. So, it is a little different. This actually, at one point, had lived in, I think, you know, a mental health, a social services bill.
Social services, Bill.
So, it got connected to school finance and it is just a single-year pilot. I mean, there is no, nothing built into the formula that automatically renews it or provides any additional funding. So, right now, it's a single-year pilot program. And the way it was explained to us from KSD, because we've been trying to figure out kind of on the fly how the funding piece will flow to us and go out, so we've had some conversations about that. We'll have actually more information coming in this week as they finalize some paperwork to work out the details with the partners, but it's really about connecting services and getting those, those resources connected that we see them, the needs at the school, but they need additional resources outside of the school and whether it's family-based or kid-based and having that, what our person, the liaison, would be able to say, okay, we've got this, these issues, we're gonna connect your family with these services and they may even occur after school or over a lunch hour or something where, because these kids aren't able to get to those appointments after school because the families don't have transportation or they're not able to go. So, it's really about connecting resources available in the community with our kids who are in the most need.
We're getting closer to actually stating what it actually is being, what it's actually going, what it's actually designed to do.
It is designed to meet the needs of the mental and social and emotional needs of our students. That's the intent of the program.
And it's to tie together all the things that were already being done, including inside and outside of the school district?
How about?
See, this is not, I mean, I did...
I think it's vague because it's so new and we don't have a lot of the documentation related to it yet.
But everything has a genesis. What is a one-sentence, two-sentence statement of what this seven point five million dollars is trying to do?
It is trying to meet the needs of the mental health crisis that we have in our state.
And how, see, this, I appreciate you trying to knock it down to two sentences and that, and that, but it's like, what is, what is the problem? How's this seven point five million addressing the problem and then what is the expected outcome?
That is what the team is working on. That's why we have not come to you because right now, what we're trying to wait and figure out, first of all, is are we gonna get the money? And then, we need to work with, they're developing outcomes for us to determine whether, you know, and they're also doing parameters, who's going to be able to accept the services. So, there's lots of work in progress, but it's not ready for detailed discussion at this time because we don't have all of the specificities because we sit, we're still sitting on conference calls, we're still learning and understanding what the expectation that we will have, what is the expectations of the mental health associations whom we will be partnering with, and what does all of that mean for students and the outcomes that we will be looking for. And again, it's a one-year pilot. It may, it may not work and we may not be doing it again next year. But again, this is just a start to be able to address the mental and social, emotional health of our students and families that we serve in urban school settings, which we are one of.
Yeah, and I don't have any problem with us receiving the seven point five million. I'm assuming the goals are good, but I'm just a little surprised at how vague they are.
Everything that we get is vague and we, we agree. We will be putting, once we get what they are going to give to us as their basis of what we're supposed to do, we always are the ones to put the meat on the bones. So, once we get that bottom piece, then we will build it and then we will share it with you. But until we know what it is, all of the details, there's not much more we can do, just like we can't do anything about our budget because we don't know what it is that we're going to get. It's kind of weird working this way, but we're used to it because we, a lot of times we are not sure what we're going to get or what is expected of it. And then we think we know and then tomorrow, it may be something else. And that's just part of education and how we work sometimes, which is unfortunate, but that's where we are. This is an opportunity for us, however, to be able to have services for our kids and for the legislators to recognize that there is a need and to want to do something about it is a plus. However, it's always the details that we wait on to be able to know then where we move from here.
Okay, well, I just hope, as soon as we get the details, please share it with the board.
Oh, yeah. We don't move without you.
I mean, I, I mean, I think this is, I think their intent is good. I just, I'm just...
KSD is scrambling on this one as well.
Everybody's scrambling.
That's the feeling I get.
Welcome to education.
Stan, I think I can answer your question a little easier than, Dr. Thompson's being a little politically correct. We've got a Senator or a representative in Topeka that had a wild idea, got it in the bill last minute and is now trying to make everybody figure out what he wants to do. I think that's the bottom line answer. And in all honesty, it's, it's probably the truth because they, he probably doesn't have a clue what he wants. He just heard the word social and emotional and those are key words in the United States right now and he was trying to make a name for himself. So, I'll go over to the board and, yeah, send the letters to me, I'll take them and... But I think that's the real answer, Stan.
Yeah, and I think that's where the, where the confusion was coming from was, I mean, I still not really, I mean, I think Dr. Thompson's been trying, I mean, I think she's made an honest effort to try to explain what it's for, but, you know, everything has a genesis and the genesis from this was very confusing from the very start.
You can't explain the unexplainable.
But we can try.
We can try and they will.
Thank you.
Cheryl?
Okay, I'm going back to nuts and bolts here. On your chart, and if you wouldn't mind bringing that up on the computer so that the people in the audience can see it as well, the chart that's, that lays out the next five years and how much money we're gonna get.
You want statewide?
Yes, that, that. Sorry, I wasn't clear. I just want to kind of point out a couple of things. Our base in two thousand eight was four thousand four hundred and ninety-two dollars, correct?
Correct.
So, we are going to get back to our base, just a little bit above our base in the year twenty-one, twenty-two.
Twenty-one, twenty-two, square meters.
Where we were in two thousand eight.
That is correct.
And think of all the things and all the costs that have gone up over that period of time. And, you know, having been on the board and had to cut the budget every single year I was on the board with the exception of last year and hopefully not this year, I can see it by looking at another chart that you have, which is the funding challenges for USD two five nine, where it shows if with fixed costs and, and a slight modest, you said modest increase for teachers, that we're going to be cutting our budget, not this year, but next year and every year thereafter, in order to give our teachers any kind of a raise.
That's, that's, that's the message that we're trying to convey through the Supreme Court is that this, the length of time is too long. It's not even so much the total dollars, but five years spread, first years looks good, but the outlying years, it gets tighter and tighter. Yeah, it's a problem.
It is a huge problem for us because, because our, Mike referred earlier to our fixed maintenance costs, you know, just to keep our buildings up, we've done a great job thanks to our citizens, passing our bonds, getting our facilities up to twenty-first century standards, but we now have buildings who have twenty-year-old air conditioners.
Yes.
And we've got to start working on those so that we maintain our facilities. If we can't maintain facilities, if we can't pay teachers anything more, if we can't do anything except keep the lights on because basically that's all this will allow us to do, we're in trouble. And, and I don't, you know, I think the big number, five hundred and some million dollars, puts stars in people's eyes, making them think that in reality, we're gonna be in great shape. Folks, we're not gonna be in great shape.
Yeah, I think that was the, the point I was trying to make with these slides is, you know, our, our naysayers will say, they're six hundred and twenty, six hundred and thirty million dollars, oh, the greedy schools. And then you look at what that means over five years for us, just doing status quo, we're not making any headway on, on kids that aren't performing, we're just keeping even with our fixed costs and a small, you know, inflationary rate for, for our staff so that we can actually go out and attract them to come work for us, we're, we're upside down year two.
That's right. And not only are we upside down, but we're not even back to where we were ten years ago, twenty years ago.
No, no. This isn't making a dent in the hundred million dollars of reallocations and cuts. This doesn't touch the eighty-five to ninety million dollars of deferred maintenance that we presented earlier to the board, so no.
And it doesn't give our teachers anywhere close to what they deserve.
And we're not catching up on those steps and any of that work that we started to do.
Yeah. So, there's a lot of work still to be done on this budget and, you know, we may slide through this year without taking cuts, but I can see very quickly, this new board is gonna have to face cuts in the next very close years.
And it impacts their retirement.
Absolutely, everything.
So, since this is my first budget year planning, being on the board, I'm learning what is apparently a very abnormal process because this is not how a governing body should be developing a budget, you know, last minute and all these. And so, I, my question was, it seems like this has been the case for several years. When was the last time we had a normal, like, budget planning time period? So, you know...
This is only my second year, so I'm not really a whole lot further along, but yes, the, the last time there were dollars to make, where we knew what the dollars were going to be and they, we could forecast those was the two thousand seven, two thousand eight school year.
Yeah. So, I won't let everybody know how old I was in two thousand eight, but suffice it to say, it was quite some time ago. Yeah, so, I'm, I'm looking forward to in the future perhaps a normal budget cycle because that would be a wonderful thing to be able to be strategic fully.
And know what, be able to plan out more than a, you know, a couple of months in advance, that would be really nice.
Ben, Cheryl, I've been on the board six and seven years and we still have to see a normal budget year. So, does that tell you anything?
It does, unfortunately.
Your kid will be graduating high school before we see a budget. You won't have to worry about pre-K. That's all the questions we have. Thank you very much, Susan. Mike, next item.